All right, the time is now 6:30. I'm going to call this session of the Ridgefield City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilmember Wells, would you like to read this?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Favela.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Burkle.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Protem Chipman.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here. All right. Mr. Stewart, are there any late changes to the agenda this evening?
No late changes, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. We will move on. We're going to start this evening off with the proclamation, and I'm excited about this one. This is to commemorate the 80th anniversary of the NAACP Vancouver Branch. I'm going to read it, and then we have Reverend Michael Jones here to receive it, and we'll do a photo, and we'll give him a chance to say a few words as well. So, so the proclamation says, "Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People exists to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. And whereas founded in 1945, the Vancouver Branch of the NAACP has worked for eight decades to improve equality and justice in our community by protecting voting rights, promoting fair housing and equitable employment, providing advocacy, amplifying marginalized voices, and fostering cross-cultural understanding in Ridgefield, Clark County, and beyond. And whereas the NAACP's work in youth membership, scholarships, and educational equity supports opportunities for young people and families throughout Clark County, including Ridgefield. And whereas, as Ridgefield continues to grow and diversify, the recognition of the NAACP's 80-year legacy serves as a reminder of the importance of creating welcoming and inclusive environments for all residents. And whereas the 80th anniversary celebration will be held on November 1st honoring individuals, organizations that have contributed to the branch's mission, now therefore I, Matt Cole, Mayor of the City of Ridgefield, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025, as commemoration of the 80th anniversary of the NAACP Vancouver Branch, and I encourage all residents to promote community engagement, collaboration, and commitment to justice and continuing to advance equity, inclusion, and opportunity in their own neighborhoods dated this 23rd day of October 2025, the City of Ridgefield, signed by me." Thank you very much. Yes. Reverend Jones, would you please come forward? We'll give this to you. Thank you so much. We'll come down for a photo real quick if that's okay with you. Yeah. Do we have somebody to take a photo? Yeah. Yeah. The other Davis?
I am.
Oh, my gosh. He's always way far ahead.
I know.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Cole, city council members, and everyone here today. My name is Reverend Michael Jones, Jr. I'm the Vice President and Chair of the Legal Redress and Civil Rights Committee, and humbled and honored to stand here before you as we celebrate a significant milestone in our branch, that being the 80th anniversary of the NAACP. For eight decades, the branch has been steadfast advocate for justice, equality, and civil rights, serving as a vital voice for our community. Our work has touched generations from protecting voting rights and advancing fair housing to ensuring access to education and equal opportunity for all. We gather at a pivotal moment in history, literally across our nation. Fundamental rights and human dignity are being challenged, and our society is at a crossroad. It is crucial to understand the difference between respect and dignity. Respect is earned and conditional, while dignity is inherent, and it is worth every individual carries. Regardless of their race, their sexuality, their gender or ability, or where they come from, or what they believe, protecting that dignity is important and must guide our actions and policies. Last weekend, Councilmember Katie and I attended a session with leadership Clark County where part of the conversation on equity and inclusion focused on the importance of dignity and respect. That conversation reinforced really just how essential it is that we, as a community, prioritize these principles in every interaction and decision. Here in Clark County, our work extends beyond issues that impact just African-American communities. We are committed to protecting civil rights and liberties for all, advocating for equity, justice, and opportunity wherever it is really needed. We look forward to strengthening our relationship with the City of Ridgefield and supporting the community wherever and however we may need to be. I'm grateful for members of the council who will be joining us at our 80th anniversary gala next weekend, and I look forward to collaborating and celebrating in this milestone together with the community. Again, I would like to thank sincerely Mayor Cole and the entire city council for recognizing this milestone and for your ongoing support and partnership. Your partnership reminds us that building a just, equitable, and inclusive community is a shared responsibility. As we celebrate 80 years of the NAACP Vancouver Branch, we honor the legacy of those who came before us while reaffirming our commitment to, again, protecting dignity, advancing justice, and ensuring that every person in Vancouver and Ridgefield and Clark County is seen, valued, and heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, too. I appreciate your partnership, Reverend, and looking forward to celebrating your anniversary next weekend with you at the gala. So, thank you again for the invite. Okay, we're going to move on. We have, it's time for a public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time to the podium or use the raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For controls of the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six to unmute. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Michael Jennings. I continue to appreciate your logic, caring organization, and your detailed management. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Is there anybody else in the room tonight that would like to give pop a comment? Seeing, Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online.
Okay. We will go ahead and close public comment and move on in our agenda. We'll move to the consent agenda. Council, I would accept a motion to approve it.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Much carries. Thank you, we'll move on. And then we have a presentation tonight. We have our friends from Ridgefield Main Street here to join us and to provide an update. I'd like to introduce Mary Kay Lamro, the Executive Director, and I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you and good evening. We are waiting for another presenter, so we'll just switch our order. Mike Bomar is going to be here and help talk about our efforts for this year. But I will start while we wait for him, and thank you and good evening, and we appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Main Street Tax Credit Program. Very briefly, this program allows businesses and cities to keep tax payments in the community by pledging to their Main Street organizations and receiving the 75% credit of those donations in BNO accounts for businesses and public utility accounts for municipalities. We thank you very much for the participation in 2023, and we're here to talk about this year's efforts and future participation. Ridgefield Main Street is investing in the heart of Ridgefield. Why does that matter? Ridgefield's downtown is our community's front porch, the place that tells the story of yesterday and today. It connects a sense of small town, heart of community, and who we are. As our city grows, we must be stewards in preserving the heart that gives Ridgefield its unique charm. Investing in downtown is how we do that, by keeping local dollars here and turning them into visible results that strengthen connection, pride, and the sense of belonging. We're growing fast, and a strong partnership between the City of Ridgefield and Main Street is vital to support the city's comprehensive plan and economic development priorities. We heard at the Main Street Conference in Gig Harbor recently that research shows downtown districts only transform in a meaningful, sustainable way when the city and local Main Street organization are aligned, collaborating, and pulling together. Your continued support and investment ensures that Ridgefield grows into its identity, not away from it. We're building this community together. That means the City of Ridgefield, Ridgefield Main Street, local businesses, property owners, and residents are linking arms with shared purpose, shared roles, and shared commitment. So what's next? Our partnership is key for a shared future of downtown. We want to align with the city's RISE initiative for downtown revitalization. We will continue to engage partners, merchants, and residents in a shared vision for a thriving downtown core. We plan to expand impact beyond events into business development, placemaking, recruiting, and business vitality. Downtown Ridgefield is a thriving hub where history, culture, and community come together, a place where people connect, businesses flourish, and visitors feel the spirit of our city. And now I would like to introduce Mike Bomar, our immediate past Chair, and a member of our outreach committee to talk more about where we are with the tax program today and moving forward. Then we can come back and I will, we can answer questions as time allows. Thank you. Mike Bomar.
Thank you, Mary Kay, and my sincere apologies for a variety of things here. First of all, for giving Mary Kay a heart attack in showing up the last minute. We just lost a heartbreaker. I was on the chain gang and didn't get a chance to, couldn't walk away, sorry. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and again, this is chain gang gear. It's not promoting, as much as I love Ridgefield, this is not my intended gear, so sorry for the decorum. But thanks for the opportunity to speak and for the ongoing support of Ridgefield Main Street and our mutual efforts to protect and promote our historic downtown. Originally, our ask for council tonight was to consider participating again in the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program with the $100,000 contribution, where 75% of that contribution would be credited towards your state portion of your public utility tax liability in '26. Unfortunately, the state limit for credits was unexpectedly reached, leaving Ridgefield Main Street well short of our targeted contribution goal for the year. As a result, we've revised our ask this year to be a simple $25,000 contribution, potentially being able to be used as towards a TCIP this year if there's a last-minute allocation of unclaimed credits. Additionally, we're requesting that the city manager be authorized to pledge up to $100,000 for the 2026 TCIP pledge period that opens in the first quarter of this next year. This year, in addition to numerous social media posts and broad outreach through RMS' newsletter channels, we directly contacted over 55 businesses with multiple touchpoints, asking them to consider participating in the Main Street Tax Credit Program. We kicked this effort off with a hosted breakfast for businesses and CPAs to explain the program and to ask that CPAs spread the word to their clients. We also engaged with the Building Industry Association of Clark County, including an in-person presentation to their membership, asking for their support. We engaged our board of directors and provided them with email templates and other resources to help spread the word about the program. To prepare for better results next year, the group will be reaching out, including more in-person meetings, to even a larger group of businesses in the area. We'll be dedicating more time during our board orientation for empowering our board members with the tools they need to confidently market this opportunity. And we'll be carrying the message of urgency that we need those commitments in the first quarter, using this sad year as an example of why that urgency is so necessary. We'll also be consulting with at least three other Main Street programs across the state, and we've already met with CAMIS, who were able to meet their cap to learn best practices and to gain more knowledge on the ways that we can improve our outreach. We'll be reviewing marketing materials to ensure they're clear and easy to understand. We've already started conversations to secure pledges for next year, including those who have verbally pledged to commit this year but missed that opportunity. The RMS Board will be meeting next month, and we'll also be looking at additional ways to diversify our funding streams, including exploring the possibility of lodging tax or other direct partnerships in tourism and economic development with the city. Next year, we'll continue to come alongside the city with flexibility and resources to complete projects like the latest community mural and peak lights. 2026 work plan projects involve continuing placemaking, beautification, and business support through gatherings like community meetings, as well as micro-enterprise series support. We ask the city council to help us in our efforts, not only by participating in the program directly, but by thinking about this opportunity as you engage with local businesses and to help make introductions to RMS for those businesses who are interested in keeping more of their tax dollars local. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and I'll turn it back to Mary Kay, but I'll be available if you have any questions. Thank you.
I think just to recap, I will just reiterate, it was a surprise that we, that the cap was reached on October 1st. The first year, the $5 million cap was not reached. That was two years ago. Last year, it took until December, and so for this year, everybody was surprised that it, that it ended and was reached on October 1st. That's great for the program. That's great, shows really the value of what that is, and we're going to be working really hard to try to communicate better the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, okay. Thank you both for presenting. We will, I, we will turn to council for discussion and questions and answers. As we do that, I think it's important to, for myself to just acknowledge that I, my wife works at Main Street, and in order to not present any level of conflict of interest, I will be refraining from discussion tonight, but I will still be here to chair the meeting and facilitate discussion as all, but I won't be contributing. But I just wanted the public and fellow members of council to know that I don't want there to be any look of impropriety. But as we go into that, I'm going to start on my far right here and just look to council and say, is there any questions, anything for Main Street? And Councilor Davis, we'll start with you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you guys coming out and sharing with us. I, I guess, I'm curious about numbers. So, looking ahead to 2026, what is the goal for participation? Is it getting to a specific dollar amount? I assume that's the case, or are we looking at other metrics like in terms of how many businesses are actually participating or a percentage or whatever?
The budget this year was $135,000. We ended up with $39,000. We will talk about how we adjust that. What we know is also important is that we need to focus on sponsorship as well as the tax credit program. We need a healthy mix there. We're at about 60% of our overall income comes from the tax credit program. That's high for a Main Street program. We need to work on those other sources to protect from things like this, to be a little more diversified. So I think the education about the tax credit program and an overall focus on sponsorship as also an alternative is what we're going to be going for.
So what's the goal then for 2026?
The ma, you want to help me?
Sorry.
It's all right.
So it'll be a two-pronged approach. One, we're trying to be more conservative on our budgeting side, and so that doesn't mean we can't exceed that if more credits are taken from businesses. And on the other side, we're going to amp up the market. So, I don't, they don't release the actual cap. It's probably going to be somewhere between 130 to 180, somewhere in there.
Oh, okay. Okay.
160 right in between there.
160.
So that won't be our budget, but it'll certainly be, be the target.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
That, that's helpful. Thank you.
Great. Councilor Favela, any questions?
Yeah, I, echoing, just appreciating you all being here and coming to talk to us. What are some of the lessons learned that you all have had in the last year on the board and engagement in the community that, looking towards 2026, you kind of want to maybe revamp or change a direction or lean more into?
Quite frankly, it's been a tough couple of years, not only for Main Street, but for nonprofits in general, and as we know, for businesses. So I think that what we can continue to do to communicate value and impact and some personal approaches and touches will be effective. With the tax credit program, it really is businesses that have a connection to Ridgefield and playing on that is important. I think empowering board members to be able to share our story and our impact more effectively will be helpful. We have a really good volunteer base and strong committee structure. Building those committees to help spread the word, spread workload, is also a high priority. We've had that for a few years, and we're seeing some great increase in community committee representation and involvement.
Mayor Protem.
So, I think one of the things that we've been missing through this last year is everything that Mike just shared with us about all the, all the effort that had gone on, because until tonight, I didn't realize any of those things had happened. So I think going into this next year, it would be really helpful if maybe on a quarterly basis or something, you know, we got some type of report about how many people you'd reached out to or whatever, because when we sit here, we don't, you know, we don't realize what the effort is that you have made to reach out to people, and it sounds like actually there was a lot more effort than I thought had happened, just because we weren't aware of it, just because we hadn't been told of it. So I think that's a pretty important part for us when, when you come to us asking, you know, for money and for support. It's like, okay, so exactly what has been done and how many businesses have been reached out to, and, and we weren't aware. We didn't know. So I think that would be really helpful if we had, even on a quarterly basis, some type of a report of, you know, how many businesses had been reached out to and what you guys had.
I appreciate that, and thank you. And I had the opportunity to speak at the chamber meeting last month, and I did talk about the tax credit program and got two calls just from being at that meeting. So we also think that a more publicly broadcast outreach can be effective, too. These were two businesses that I was not aware of, that wasn't on our list, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilor Wells, I'll turn to you.
Yes, I got a couple of questions, maybe for Mike. One of them, did you have a 25? It's on.
Got you, yeah.
$25,000, ask for 25, and then $100,000 for 26?
Yes, yeah. So if, if the city was contributing $100,000, there would be 75% of that, this year, if we still had credits available, there would be a $100,000 ask. 75% of that would be a credit against your public utility tax, and then 25 would be an out-of-pocket or a match, so to speak, locally for that. So we're just asking for that portion. I would note that we don't know, we can't guarantee, but if credits, if somebody doesn't pay their pledge and credits become last-minute open, that contribution, we're looking to see, could be contributed towards, so you'd get a credit still, but we can't guarantee that at this point.
Okay. That was one of the questions. Question number two is, you said you had verbal pledges from individuals and they didn't come across. Did you ever contemplate asking for a written pledge?
Yes, so we have followed up for, it actually was in writing, for at least multiple that didn't come through, and we're in the process of going through, and Mary Kay had actually followed up and was working with the controllers of those companies to get the pledges in, so they were ready to go. I think one of the challenges, as Mary Kay mentioned, is that we kind of took for granted over the last couple of years. We've had some even out of area. It's anywhere in Washington State can contribute to Ridgefield Main Street tax credits, so it doesn't have to be a Ridgefield business, you just have to be paying Washington BNO. And we've had, we've been frankly lucky over the past, until about last year, with some very large contributions that kind of ate up a lot of that, of those tax credits. And so I think the sense of urgency certainly that we'll be carrying forward is there now, knowing that this early the cap has been met. There's also pressure at the state legislature as well, too, so we're watching that closely in terms of those credits being available going forward. But I, I don't think it was fault of the businesses, per se, and we did get it in writing, it's just they had contributed in the past and hadn't worried about it. We had told them before November 1st, our deadline is in November, so they just needed to pledge and contribute, and the pledge piece just didn't get done.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Councilor Burkle.
Thank you. Just, I heard a suggestion that 55 contacts had been made. In Ridgefield, what would be the total number of contacts that could be made?
Yeah, like our database.
Yeah, so we have a database. I think it has over 100 or so, and there, there's a lot more than 55 that received emails and information about the plan. I don't have a total in Ridgefield of businesses offhand. It would be a much larger, a lot of them, though, BNO tax, like certain providers, at least up until this year, didn't pay BNO tax. That, that base is widening a little bit, but there are a lot of businesses that don't pay much in BNO tax, sole proprietors, others that just don't have enough on that credit side to make it worthwhile. So we really targeted Ridgefield companies that pay enough in BNO that they would be able to make a meaningful contribution. We didn't, we also asked a lot of Main Street businesses that did contribute, but those are smaller amounts typically and don't add up to the, the larger amount of the cap.
Just, just one other quick question. Help me understand, I, I know some of the things that you do, but could you tell me what might be the last three major projects you completed in Ridgefield?
I think more, some of the more noticeable things that are going on that are Main Street projects are, one, we have done the hanging flower baskets every year. That budget is now at about $16,000. We have increased in the last two years from 15 to 20 to 30 baskets now. That's a real visible impact project that we're really proud of. We have a facade grant enhancement program, so all of the buildings who have new paint or murals, the fence and concrete between RCB and El Rancho Viejo that connected those two businesses, the painting of the neighborhood refuge, there are quite a few other facade enhancement grants. Over the past four years, we've invested about $75,000 into that program. We have a couple more coming up. The post office has been repainted, and actually the project at 303 Pioneer, that house, is newly redone, new roof and new paint. So those visible things. And also, I think the impact of our moolah program this year has really been seen and felt. It started out as sort of a novelty fun thing, but really has become an important quantifiable outreach and business supporter. This year, we've distributed about $30,000 of moolah. We started out with a reimbursement budget of 15, raised that to 25, and now we have exceeded 25. And that's $25,000 that has been paid directly to merchants who have received that moolah that we put out there. So those are some of the, I think, impact projects.
Thank you. I may be naive, I think maybe you could do, as an organization, a better job of telling people what you do. Example, the house you referenced, I think it's terrific what occurred. I did not know that you were involved with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Councilor Hamilton, I'll go to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Kay. I am the liaison for the city to this organization, so I have a huge special place in my heart for it. I find the value tremendous. I think that marks have been missed, and that's, those are conversations that we've already had, that's no mystery here. I, I think growth only works when everyone is really intentional about the way it's going to go, and that, to me, is regular evaluation. So to Mayor Protem's point, I think that you and I can have communication moving forward, that is check-ins that are different, and really letting us know, because I, I want to keep the dollars in Ridgefield. I think that the, the benefit of that program is, is very tangible. I don't want to speak for council, so maybe this can be a conversation here, is the temperature on this, because I have ideas for how we can make this work in different ways if it's not directly what's going on here, but I don't want to jump the gun on that process if, if we're not there.
Okay, great. And I guess to that point, I'll look to council. There's no action scheduled on this tonight. It is, it is a presentation. That said, any consideration of, of a gift to you would have to be factored into our 2026 budget, and so staff would need to know that. And in order to do that, we need to have probably an indication from council what the appetite is for that. So I guess I could look around, if there's other comments, other questions, we can do another round through that. Otherwise, we can look to you to say, what is, you know, what is the rest of council thinking in regards to Main Street's prospective request for TCIP funds in 2026?
I have one. Yeah, I had a couple. It's on.
It is on.
Yeah, it was on. I had two other questions before we get into that part of it. Have we had much response from larger businesses in Ridgefield? And I mean, you say large employers, and I'm not asking for names, just broad, broad brush on that. Have they been able to jump in and be part of?
Yeah, I won't name names. I can tell you, we do, we can't list logos, but we do, we have a place where you can see who has contributed, so I'll, I'll follow up with you on that. I will say, this year, and this happens in the other half of my day job, there, this has been the most uncertain year and both from the, without being political at all, both from the federal level and the state level, there were a lot of changes coming at businesses. And what typically happens is paralysis. So for programs like this, they just said that, that they don't know what business is like this year, and we got a lot of those. So, uh, it wasn't like they were not happy with Main Street. If we didn't get any of that type of feedback, we got, I just don't know what's going on with my business and I, I can't do that right now.
Okay. That was, that answered that question. The other question I just got a comment on. Um, I was surprised today that a lot of the health industry, uh, if they're not for profit, they're not going to get charged B and O. But if they're for profit, they're going to get charged B and O. And it's really shaking up the industry, because when they turn around to deal with their insurance, uh, providers, they usually do it a year ahead. And so then they're not covered, uh, that way. So I'm just passing that on, that I don't, maybe you're aware of it, but the rest of the public may not be. But, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Wells. So that, that's a great comment. And, uh, the healthcare providers, larger ones that you know, have been large contributors in the past to this program as well too. We saw a dip during COVID for obvious reasons from those particular contributors, um, but, and we had some this year as well too. But, uh, that is, those changes to the system really, uh, make it difficult for us at times as well.
I'll ask the question.
Thank you.
So who do you have that manages your financials and do you have them audited?
We have a treasurer and it is suggested that Main Street communities are audited about every five years, and we have not done one yet.
Okay. So, I guess for me, I would love to see an audit, um, or maybe to have our treasurer, our finance department or something review the books or whatever. Um, some type of an audit. Um, I don't think that would be out of line if we were, if we were going to continue to support. I think that would be a reasonable ask. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. And to that point too, there is, I mean, there's the Washington Main Street program and they have a, a self-assessment that can, we, you can participate into that I think would be a good idea, because it helps gauge organizational health effectiveness, alignment with national Main Street standards. So that might be a nice assessment for us to, to review also.
I do also, in addition to our annual reporting, do report, uh, at the national level, uh, for our partner accreditation process. So yes, there are a couple of informal things that we do. Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Other questions or comments from council at this point? I'll look around. Uh, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Johnson, do we have money in the 2026 budget already bookmarked for this support? You're marked, yeah.
Council had not, um, indicated anything at this point. So no, there's nothing at this point that's in the 2026 budget. That would be council direction that we would need.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Hamilton.
So I have a thought with that. Um, I think that from what I've heard amongst us, and I don't want to speak for anyone, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but that there is some trepidation and some hesitation. We have asked each department within the city to really pare down their budgets, and we're being very, very budget conscious right now. So I don't know that the January commitment makes sense, because we just went through the budget. But we have an opportunity in May to do a supplemental review. And I think if this aligns with anyone else, I think that if we have the intention of dollar for dollar, almost to me. So it's like, I'm responsible to you, you're responsible to me. If you, if we come in and we can see that you've already had $50,000 in, $50,000 in pledges, then the city can look at $50,000 as a contribution. 75, 75, 100, 100, whatever that is. But I think for all of us, understanding the program and looking at, um, making sure that we're being fiscally responsible with our taxpayer dollars, that we know that we're getting the value in the program of everything you just said, but then actually just seeing it tangibly. Um, and then I would love to be the person that checks in with you. That, I, we can do that monthly. We, it doesn't have to, I think quarterly, if we're asking for a May thing is a little off timing wise, but I think check-ins with me on progress, touch points, goal execution, things like that. I can, I'm happy to be that person, because I do think that this is such a valuable program and there's so much, I've been in the weeds with everybody here to know how much infrastructure is in place and how much of a community partner we have together with one another. But I think that there's just that hesitation in like, okay, let's make sure that we're all creating a financial investment that makes sense for the city and also aligns with partners and helps support the community that we love so much. That's my, those are my two cents.
Councilor Favela.
I would echo that. I, I appreciate Main Street and I appreciate our downtown. So I don't want anything to come across that there is no support from council. That's not it. But with any partnership, especially when there's finances being exchanged, there has to be a level of transparency. And I don't have the full picture, I feel, of transparency. So I echo Mayor Protem, reviewing financials, seeing where things are at, um, better communication, better lay of the land, so that when we make these decisions, we can make them in good faith, knowing like, yeah, we have unturned everything. We're good to go.
Thank you.
Great. Oh, were you going to say something?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you for the comment.
I'll turn to Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will add emphasis to Councilor Hamilton. I appreciate the work that you've done, uh, engaging with the organization. And that was kind of where my mind was at, was more of a threshold model, is showing that, you know, the plan is working, uh, right? And then being able to, to jump in and, and like Councilor Favela said, being stewards of public funds. Um, you know, I, I just, I think that that's a reasonable solution, um, in terms of, of doing a match and pursuing that at supplemental time, I think is, is appropriate where we can, we can hop in. But, um, you know, we can make, make sure the plan's working. So.
So that would be a Q2 match in, in, in that period. Where, whatever we have secured for Q1 in Q2, as far as the pledge period goes, would be a match of, of the amount that we have raised?
Yeah. I mean, can you do a month by month? Like, can we look at in May when we have our meeting? If it's not exactly a Q2, yeah, I think it's just where, how far we are along whenever that date is set. And I'd have to check with city staff about exactly when those, that the best time for that meeting would be. And then we could work backwards from there.
My understanding is we can authorize in May the cap, right? So we might authorize the cap, but if it was on a match, it would be whatever that match was, correct?
Well, certainly you have, uh, the supplemental budget process that usually is in May that we bring to you. And at that point, it's up to the council. You have discretion to authorize whatever that amount is that you see fit. So I think that what we would be looking for is just some direction on the information that you would want us to bring you, and so that we're working with, uh, Ridgefield Main Street to assure that you have that, uh, with regards to how you identify the amount. Um, that's something that can be developed over time too. It doesn't, it's not something we would need right now. For our purposes, for staff, really all we need tonight is if you were going to make a change to the 2026 budget, it must be published by November 1st. So any kind of direction on a January 1 commitment, we just need to know that now. Beyond that, we can work with you on it.
Go ahead.
I, yeah, I think for the direction, well, what I'm hearing, and y'all can speak for yourself, but clarity on finance, uh, the financial state of Main Street, where they've been in the past, maybe doing, um, an audit with them side by side, just to get that transparency. So when we do come back to conversations, um, we have a full picture to work with. Um, and all our questions have been answered at that time.
Councilor Burkle.
Thank you. Just a, a quick comment. I think all of us on this council want to support and appreciate what you do. Please understand, we just finished working or we're close to finishing our budget. And we've had to make some pretty significant reductions throughout the city. So it's not that we're not wanting to support, it's just, we have to do it in the appropriate and correct manner. And I just thank you for everything you do for Ridgefield. It's, it's very, very important.
Thank you. Understood.
Okay. I agree with, uh, Councilor Hamilton. Uh, I guess it's Councilor, uh, anyway, uh, I was in a briefing yesterday with her and Mayor Protem, and we had a really big discussion on it, trying to figure out how we can turn around and support you with the cuts that we've had to make to turn around, live with in-house. And I think that this compromise with, um, putting your feet in the fire, uh, I say it like it is, and turn around and get you to come forward. We want to support you 100% and this way we can justify it with our constituents, the rest of the community, rather than us, uh, seven people just making a decision and not including the thought of the community that way. So, um, I guess that's all I can say. Thank you.
Great. Okay, I'll look to both directions, council. Any other questions, thoughts or comments to offer Main Street or staff at this point? Okay.
I think we're good.
Yeah. Thank you, Mary Kay. Thank you, Mike, for coming tonight. Thank you for, uh, everybody else with the organization for showing up tonight. It, uh, it is a good statement and, uh, we appreciate your partnership. We really do. And thank you for being here and giving us a report.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Staff, do you have everything you need from council at this point?
I believe so. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Thank you, council.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on in our agenda, on to the business portion. The first item of business tonight is a, the use and maintenance agreements with indirect recreational program providers. And this will be presented by Mr. Crownheart.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and council. And it is always a pleasure to be back talking to you about parks. And specifically today, recreation. While the City of Ridgefield does not, does not provide any official recreation programs, we work to ensure that recreational programs are provided and accessible through an indirect service model. Tonight, we're here to present the city's use and maintenance agreements with those service providers, specifically Ridgefield Little League and Pacific Soccer. The goal tonight is simple, to review the Ridgefield's current recreation delivery model, discuss our longstanding partnerships, and walk through the updates of the use agreements for Abrams Park and the Ridgefield Outdoor Recreation Complex, the RORC. I want to share with you that this is a routine renewable, renewal of an agreement that originally was adopted in 2019 with both of these organizations. The updates primarily reflect revised field allocations, cost sharing, and alignment with this, with the current facilities, operations, and standards. Slide please. Before we dig into the agreements themselves, let's discuss how the differing, how there are different approaches to recreational program delivery in the park and recreation industry. Direct service or staff-delivered or organized programs are more common in larger municipalities. And even in those larger municipalities, they typically have a blended model where some services are provided directly by staff and some are provided indirectly by partners. Ridgefield's approach to recreation follows an indirect service model. Rather than the city directly operating programs like camps, leagues, or classes, we, we focus on providing and maintaining high-quality facilities. Our partners, Pacific Soccer Club and Ridgefield Little League, then deliver the programs themselves. This model is common amongst cities of Ridgefield size across the country, allowing the city to sustain strong facilities while relying on community organizations to provide quality programming for residents. Slide please. Our two partner organizations are the foundation of the youth recreation that we have here in Ridgefield. Ridgefield Little League has been providing baseball and softball opportunities for decades, serving more than 400 youth annually. Pacific Soccer Club offers both recreational and developmental soccer programs for hundreds of local families each season. Both organizations operate with a strong volunteer support structure and a focus on inclusivity, teamwork, and skill development. And both are functioning 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. These partnerships exemplify the spirit of community recreation. Slide. Abrams Park. Abrams Park continues to be one of our most active recreation sites for good reason. Under the, under the renewals of this agreement, Ridgefield Little League will have the priority use of the baseball and the softball fields, meaning they'd be able to re, reserve those spaces prior to the rest of the public. Pacific Soccer Club would have priority use of the three grassy fields down in Abrams Park. Both organizations have agreed to maintain, uh, maintain access on all site, well, both organizations maintain onsite storage in the park. They both have storage units for their activities. And they've agreed to maintenance responsibilities. And on top of that, both groups have committed to, to capital improvements to completing, to, to be completed throughout their agreements. $15,000 of improvements from the Ridgefield Little League and $5,000 for Pacific Soccer. These investments enhance safety, field performance, and user experience. And all improvements become the property of the city. Both groups have agreed to pay a standard $2,200 annual fee for field use, ensuring equity and consistency that we can reinvest into the system. Next slide. Perfect. At the Ridgefield Outdoor Recreation Complex, these agreements establish the partnership model similar to what we have at Abrams, just with a structure that is a little more formalized. And there's a, uh, we have a shared use agreement with the district. Field use fees are governed by the RORC Shared Use Agreement between the city and the school district. Under that agreement, our priority users currently receive a 75% discount on field rates. It's important to note that the shared use agreement between the city and the district is scheduled for amendment in the coming weeks and months as part of a five-year review of the facility and the broader partnership with the district. Once those updates are complete, rates for Pacific Soccer Club and Ridgefield Little League will align with the revised schedule within that agreement. The key feature of these updated agreements is the city-sponsored activity designation. This designation officially classifies the activities and reservations of these two priority users as city programs rather than general public rentals. That distinction provides them scheduling priority within the city's facility use hierarchy, ensuring that their leagues can plan and operate with consistency and predictability each season. With that privilege comes clear accountability and contribution. Each organization has a defined allocation of use hours that they are considered city-sponsored activities. 2,450 hours for Pacific Soccer League and 745 hours for Little League, balancing organized play and public access. Schedules are submitted 60 days before each quarter to the scheduler with the school district, so that we can post publicly what, what hours remain for the rest of the public 30 days in advance. The objective here is to create a facility that maximizes usage and ensures that we are allowing all users to have access to the space. Both organizations are also investing directly into the complex. Pacific Soccer Club will be contributing $25,000 to capital improvements, and Ridgefield Little League will be contributing $10,000. Those enhancements become property of the city upon completion and are directly used for the facility and other users that come into the space. Slide. These use agreements with our recreational program providers form a foundation of the recreational components within the city's parks and recreation system. They ensure that our athletic facilities are used to their fullest potential and that residents continue to have access to these valuable community assets. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor and council, for discussion, questions, and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Crownheart. Appreciate it. Uh, good presentation. Um, council, is there any questions for staff at this point on, uh, these, these two use agreements? And I'm going to just, we'll go with, Councilor Burkle, do you have a question? We'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment. Have both of these organizations been involved with the discussion so far?
Absolutely, they have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, so as far as priority users, if they, if one of those priority users needs to add hours or made a mistake, needs to add something on after that, in that 30-day period when other people have access to it, do they still remain priority? Or is that they kind of go into a pool with everybody else?
They would be permitted to make those reservations. Uh, they would not be able to be part of the prioritization process, because in order to prioritize a, a scheduling period, everybody needs to turn in their hours, their reservations at the same date so we can make that determination. If it happens within 30 days of the upcoming scheduling period or during the scheduling period, they can still make that reservation if that time is available, and they will still qualify for the reduced rate as long as they have not gone over their allotted hours.
Great. Uh, we'll go to Mayor Protem and then Councilor Davis.
So, uh, these, these, um, the improvements that they have to make to the fields, the $15,000, are they going to do that before the season starts?
The way it is structured within the agreement. The way it is structured within the agreement is they have to make at least $25,000 for the facilities. They have to make at least 20% of their agreed amount each year for the five years of the agreement, and we encourage them to spend that sooner if possible, but they have to spend at least 20% the first year and at least 20% the second year.
So basically, it's $3,000 a year for the little, for done at Abrams then?
Absolutely. Now that said, they can spend that money within the first year, and they wouldn't have to pay the remaining years because they have made that contribution. Once they reach that amount, they have fulfilled their agreement within, their commitment to the agreement.
I don't think it'd be too hard to spend $3,000 done at Abrams.
Oh, I have plenty of things that they could do there.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Davis.
Yeah, thank you. I am thrilled to really see this new structure come into play to ensure that, you know, there's some predictability, but also that we're ensuring that, you know, this is going to be a priority place for like Ridgefield-based organizations. Going back, actually, can we get to the slide thing? The capital contributions, what was it at Abrams? I caught Rourke, but I didn't catch Abrams.
Abrams.
Because I'm just looking for total.
The amount for the contributions for Abrams is $5,000 from Pacific Soccer Club, $15,000 from Ridgefield Little League. So the overall contributions for both organizations, when looking at both facilities, is $30,000 for Pacific Soccer Club, $25,000 for Ridgefield Little League.
Okay. All right. And then is there flexibility in terms of where those get allocated, like which of those facilities? Meaning, if there's like an opportunity, you know, say Pacific Soccer wants to do something down at Abrams and it's actually more of a 10,000 and their requirement is five, are we able to slide five commitment from Rourke over to Abrams? Is there flexibility in those or...
Currently, within our structure, there's not flexibility within that.
Okay. So that might be just something we'd have to entertain if we got to it. Okay. That was more of just a curiosity. I appreciate your work on it. Thanks.
Thank you, council.
Counselor Favela.
I realize this question has already been asked, but I want to reiterate. Do each, does each entity know what the other rate person is paying, organization is paying? Does Pacific Soccer Club know what Ridgefield Little League is paying, vice versa?
The rates that they pay for Abrams Park and for the Rourke are the same fees that they pay to reserve those spaces. The capital contributions, I'm not sure if they're aware of the difference. The difference really comes down to the amount of use that the users have. Pacific Soccer has significantly more use up at the Rourke versus Ridgefield Little League down at Abrams and vice versa.
Okay. And then my second question, who runs the concession stand? Is that like a typical sport where this, whoever is using the field uses that as a fundraiser or...
The concession stand is actually part of this agreement for Ridgefield Little League. So it is operated by Ridgefield Little League during the reservations for activities within the field, and that's for the Abrams Park concession stand. Is that the one you were asking about, Counselor?
Correct. Yeah, the Abrams Park.
Yes.
So outside of that, is that concession stand not used?
Outside of those reservation hours, they're currently not being used.
So in List Center, not to compare, but I know List Center allowed someone with a business license to come in and utilize that kitchen when other places were not using it so they could have continual food coming out of it and kind of get their name out there. Is there some creative strategies that we could look at during an off-season or when it's not in use to have maybe a small business who doesn't have commercial kitchen to come in and do some stuff out of there?
We could certainly look at that. The Snack Shack down at Abrams was actually built by the Little League, and so number one, they are the ones who actually have the liability associated with, you know, what's gone into it. And they are the only ones operating it. Certainly, we could have the conversation with Ridgefield Little League about broadening that or having it available for other reservations for the outdoor recreation complex for Rourke. We actually, the city owns that building, the community meeting building and the concessions within that, and has a concessions agreement with the concessionaire that is LLC of the Raptors. And the reason for that was instead of having, we looked at having it available for others to use it, but the liability associated with other groups coming in and using all of that equipment ended up being less enticing than having a single group work with anyone who does a reservation. You can ask in Facilitron, you can say, "I want concessions." And then the Raptors LLC is required by their concessions contract to provide those concessions.
Cool. Thank you. Oh, wait, hold on. I think Counselor Hamilton had something, but I wanted to go first. So if everybody's gone one time already, then I would like that before Counselor Davis.
Has everyone asked a question first? Yeah, I was going to say Counselor Burkle, we'll go to you first.
Just a quick question, please. Who will prioritize what will be done regarding the improvement to the facilities?
The agreements contemplate that the, ultimately, the decision is made by the city as to which improvements occur, but they are done in partnership with the organizations. The organizations come to the city with ideas, and then they have to be agreed upon under the terms of this, of both of these agreements. The city has to agree to that, and that is, it's city staff. There is not a policy piece that was put into this agreement for that.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Counselor Hammond, did you ask a question already?
My question was the same as Counselor Burkle's. It was what, who, do we have a list of our own priorities for this, for the capital improvements, and that was answered, so thank you.
Okay, great. I had just a couple of questions too, and we'll go to a second round. Just for clarification, looking at the capital contributions of each league and what they contribute, so that goes into the use and maintenance of the fields. I see also there's like the specialized maintenance, you know, so each league, I know that Pacific Soccer has contributed, I guess, to goals and nets, and then I know that Ridgefield Little League does a lot of the field maintenance. They do kind of a spring cleanup every year. They're responsible for that. So when I was looking through the agreements, are those, so it is a cash contribution to capital and then those types of things are part of their operating costs for their own? Or is that, or are they kind of like, is it a cash contribution or provide materials for maintenance or like in-kind? Yeah, in-kind's the word.
These are not cash contributions per se. They are in-kind contributions if they would like. Now, that said, if they wanted to provide cash for these agreements, they absolutely could, but in conversations with both of these priority users, they're already looking at having in-kind donations and contributions.
Okay, so if there was, say, of several goals that Pacific Soccer can, like goalposts that they contributed and it cost $5,000, that would be their in-kind contribution? That would zero out their $5,000 capital improvement contribution? Is that correct?
For Abrams, it's actually going to be a cash donation.
Oh, it will be.
And for the Rourke, it's going to be in-kind contributions.
Okay. And so all the things like at, like the Little League does, like, you know, like you go there and they provide dirt for the fields, chalk, all the stuff, like materials and stuff like that, is that part of their own operating cost or is that part of this capital contribution?
That's part of their operating costs. They have a responsibility for maintenance of the fields during their seasons, and that includes the work that they do on those fields to make them playable. If you look at what's beneath the surface, like irrigation.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things. What they talked about is irrigation. Those kinds of things are bigger projects that are best suited for the city to manage, and thus those would be capital contributions that they had talked about saying, "All right, it'd be better to just put cash into it for Abrams because we know that there's projects like the irrigation that could occur," as opposed to like Rourke where those kinds of, those kinds of projects don't exist. So it's more about putting nets up or doing a scoreboard or, you know, doing those kinds of projects. But yeah, during the season, that is their responsibility under the terms of the agreement.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Okay. We can go to the second round of questions. I'll look around at, so. Okay, Counselor Favela. Do you have, oh, you...
No. Counselor Hamilton had raised her hand, and then Counselor Davis looked like he wanted to say, so I was just making sure everybody went first before we did a second round.
Thank you. I appreciate your support on that. Okay. Other questions or comments? I do have another one. I want to address the elephant in the room when it comes to Ridgefield Little League. And the league had previously gotten a little bit of hock, I guess, with the city previously by having a bunch of back charges built up, and I know that that was kind of partially related to like their previous agreement. Also, there was some internal struggles as we all know about. We don't need to hash into those right now. I'm just wondering if there is any sort of mechanism built into these new agreements that is different, that would prevent, you know, putting either the city or the league in any sort of liability where there is just an unpaid balance that keeps growing and creates a really awkward situation for the public?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking, Mayor. There is a section in these agreements for delinquencies and misuse. So if there are users that are delinquent on fees, there'll be interest paid on those or interest charged on those fees, and the city has a right to suspend future reservations until those are complete. As for misuse of reservations, let's say users wanted to blanket reserve sections of the Rourke with the intent of not actually using them, that would prompt meetings with the city as well as a potential to suspend reservations until they come back into compliance.
Is that a new addition compared to the last agreement?
That is a new agreement.
Okay, great. That answers my question. Okay, council, any other questions? If not, this is a business item. I think the staff is looking for a motion on this tonight, so I'd entertain a motion and then we can go into any debate that needs to happen at that point, so.
I would make a motion to approve the use and maintenance agreement with indirect recreational program providers.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the use and maintenance agreements with indirect recreational program providers. Council, any discussion on this? See none? Okay. We will go ahead and call the question here, so all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. And thank you, Mr. Crownheart, again, for the thorough presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay. Our second item of business this evening will be ordinance number 1463. This is the approval of AT&amp;T's franchise agreement with the city, and for that, I will turn to our Public Works Director, Mr. Ryan Thamer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Earlier this year, AT&amp;T purchased Lumen's Fiber Operations. AT&amp;T reached out to many Washington cities to negotiate franchise agreements for these operations. The city has been working with a representative from AT&amp;T for a franchise agreement related to these operations. The proposed agreement was based on other telecommunications franchise agreements within the city. It has been approved by AT&amp;T and has been reviewed and approved by staff. The franchise agreement ordinance grants to Forged Fiber 37 LLC, their agent, a 10-year franchise to construct, operate, maintain, and repair a telecommunications facility within the city right of way. The ordinance sets out the terms and conditions that the franchisee must comply with to operate in the right of way, including permits, operation, and safety of facilities, relocation, indemnification, dispute resolution, and more. And I just wanted to add that this is first reading only, so no action is required, and there is a representative from AT&amp;T online if there's questions for them. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Mr. Thamer, I appreciate you. I will, council, any questions? Counselor Favela, we'll start with you.
Thank you. With this new agreement, will they be bringing more fiber in, and if so, do we know if it's aerial or underground?
My understanding right now is that there are no new projects planned.
Okay, cool.
However, yes, they could. Oh, yeah. Okay. If they do, they would be underground because it's in our Public Works engineering standards, and our code requires that any new projects comply with those standards.
So if I recall, we had fiber put in temporarily by Quantum. Well, not temporarily. It was put in by Quantum, but it's aerial. Do they have plans to put that underground? Is it, did it ever go underground or is it still on the pole?
So the agreement I think that you're speaking of is for downtown. That was an agreement with CenturyLink, which was a precursor to Lumen that is being bought up by AT&amp;T, which somebody on council, I think, indicated to me, I think that somehow AT&amp;T and CenturyLink were also linked throughout time, so in the circular nature of telecom. But I know that there is an agreement for downtown aerial wires, aerial fiber for Quantum that was put in, and there was an agreement between the city and at the time CenturyLink that runs with the land and runs with any successors and interest to that fiber. And that agreement does indicate that if the power lines, if all of the wires are undergrounded in the downtown area, that the successor and interest would have a responsibility for their proportionate share of that undergrounding process.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Burkle.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. History with Lumen regarding the completion in a timely manner of many of the new improvements in Ridgefield was absolutely deplorable. Do we have any indication that AT&amp;T is willing to work with us in a much better way than Lumen did to assure that we don't have posts in the middle of entryways into communities, open trenches, waiting? Any indication they're willing to do that and work with us in a timely fashion?
Mayor and council, if you'd like an answer directly from the representative from AT&amp;T, I think that they are online and could answer that question directly for you.
Yes, we would.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that? I think that'd be a good way to go.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Excellent. My name is Greg Bush. I'm outside legal counsel for AT&amp;T. I'm not an AT&amp;T employee, but I am their attorney, and I did get my start in site acquisition for AT&amp;T, so I have a good understanding of the network operations. So to answer the question of is AT&amp;T willing to work with the city in complete and timely manner, the answer is yes. We've been required to provide contact information for projects, and we have requirements to post performance bonds, so if there is any hazard to open trenches or anything like that, we're required to, of course, indemnify the city and against any third-party claims, and we have to post our network operations center number, so if there are problems like that, you can call us up 24/7 and report those issues. Another item, if I may, address some of the summary that was in the staff report. I'd like to offer some clarification, if I may.
Sure, please do.
So in the summary, it was said that AT&amp;T acquired Lumen's assets. That transaction is still pending, has not closed. It is expected to close in the first half of 2026. It could close sooner, but that's what AT&amp;T is on our website with the Lumen transaction. And another item is Lumen, the fiber assets, we are purchasing substantially all of them, but we're not getting all, every single one. The entity in question that AT&amp;T is using to handle the fiber assets is named Forged Fiber 37 LLC, and the fiber is coming from the fact that the goal of this particular entity is to sell bulk fiber for one business to another business, and of course, it will be available to any business who wants to buy it, but the individual customers at this time are not part of the transaction plan to offer services to individual homes or household. This is meant to connect one part of the city to another, and correctly identified, we do not have a specific build plan for Ridgefield. I know that we have a build plan, but that, of course, is in flux depending on the capital expenditure and the budget, have to roll over to the next year. So I understand that's a lot of information in a very short amount of time, so I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Great. I appreciate the additional context that you provided. If I could, I'd like to piggyback on Counselor Burkle's question, and, Mr. Bush, this may be a question for you, maybe it's a question for staff, but, you know, going back to previous partners that we had, and I know that we had, we did have a project a couple of years ago that was really delayed and held up by Lumen at the time, and like just the timely work that was needed to be completed. And I do appreciate the sentiments offered. It sounds like there is a good faith effort to be a good partner and to provide those things, but I'm curious maybe from staff, is there something built into this that has maybe a little bit of teeth or accountability just so we don't end up in a situation again where we're waiting on an external partner and it's delaying a fairly large infrastructure project? I know we have those on the way as well.
So our city attorney's been working a lot of that language, and I just saw she turned her camera on. She'd probably be the best on staff to be able to answer that question for you.
Great. Ms. Parker. Great. Ms. Parker, I'd love to hear from you on this one. Thank you.
Wonderful. And I've been the one that was primarily working with the representatives from AT&amp;T. And so the first thing that we're going to have to point to being different than Lumen is that we're going to actually have a franchise. We've struggled for years to get CenturyLink to agree to a franchise that would give us some conditions to put on the development. And so that's what this, the whole franchise is going to give us. And there is language in the franchise about last man standing on poles to make, you know, if they are the last man standing, and they're going to be undergrounding, that they have to do that. Where they're also required to get permits for any work that they do. So we'll be able to condition those permits to make sure that we have all of the requisite safety requirements and even timing requirements of our code that would apply to the work that they do. So I believe that this franchise, it's, I can't remember what other franchisees you have in the city, but I took this template from other franchise agreements that we've had with other entities and use that as the basis for this franchise. And I think those have been operating well, and so I'm assuming then that that would translate to the same type of behavior from AT&amp;T. So I hope that answers questions.
Yeah, I think it does. Counselor Burkle, does that answer the question for you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks, Ms. Parker. We appreciate it. Counsel, other questions or comments at this point? Okay. If there are none, then Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1463, ordinance of the City of Richfield, Washington, granting Forge Fiber 37 LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company its successors and signs a franchise to construct, support, attach, connect, maintain, repair, replace, operate, and use a telecommunications system or facilitate in upon over under along across and through the rights of way of City of Richfield, Washington.
Great. Thank you very much. And this is first reading only. It'll come back to counsel at a later date for final consideration. So, okay, we will go ahead and move on. We... That closes out our business items for this evening. We do have a public hearing on the agenda tonight. This is first reading of ordinance number 1464. This is updates to the Ridgefield Municipal Code Amendments, Part Two. Ms. Lust, over to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and members of the public. As Bear mentioned, this item is a public hearing. No action is being requested tonight. I'll start with the presentation, then any initial questions and discussion from counsel, then we can move into that public hearing. So this is batch two of code amendments being brought forth this fall. As you'll recall, the first batch of code amendments generally focused on the commercial development code. This one has a few different topics, but the main topic of substance has to do with housing and residential uses. So I will be working off of the table that starts on packet page 91. All the proposed, underlined, strike-through text amendments are in the packet if we need them, but we're just going to go through the table for simplicity. All right. So the first section is all housekeeping amendments. I'm not going to go through these individually because they really are all clerical corrections. They're not substantive. They don't propose any policy changes. So unless there are questions about any of those, we can go ahead and move through them.
Counselors, are there questions on any of these housekeeping amendments? Okay, no, we can move on.
Perfect. So section two is the housing amendments, and this is on packet page 93. So I'm going to talk about row one and row three together first because they are related in the source of the proposal. So these both have to do with development standards for houses in medium-density situations, which is our sort of highest-density, single-family zone, RMD-16, eight to 16 units per acre. So the first one is a proposal to remove an existing limitation allowing detached housing in the RMD-16 zone only if it is single-story. So in other words, currently, the code prohibits two-plus-story detached houses in medium-density zone. If you're going to go up, you have to be attached, basically. So the proposal is to reverse that. Item number three on the list is removing a provision requiring homes on narrow lots to have a front door visible from the street. This amendment would allow side entries on narrow lot products. Both these proposals came out of discussions related to a subdivision known as the NIE Planned Unit Development, which previously received approval as a townhouse subdivision. The developers having trouble subsequently making that product pencil out and are exploring different options for that subdivision. So they came forth with these suggestions for consideration. I will note to counsel that adopting these as code amendments would apply them to any situation throughout the city with that zoning and those conditions. I believe something that may have come up in briefing, so hopefully this is a new information, would be if these amendments are something that makes sense, but perhaps only for a certain subdivision, we could pursue a development agreement. So I'll note that out there. So any questions about either of those two items?
Counselor Hamilton.
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, you, what you're addressing is what I would like to address as well. I think that a broad code amendment change like this has the potential to create too many cookie-cutter developments, and I would like a more individualized design and development approach. So I would like, I think these should be addressed through development agreements rather than code changes or on top of code changes. I just think that it needs to be more case-by-case, and we need to preserve the neighborhood individuality. And this makes me a little nervous that that would go too far in that direction, and I would rather us to still be able to steer the ship accordingly within a development agreement.
Is, just as a follow-up to that, is that a feasible way to go? I like what Counselor Hamilton is proposing there. Is that a, is that a good practice from your, from your point of view?
I believe it is feasible, and we have seen the challenges specific to this project play out, that it would make it appropriate to pursue changes specific to that project. Also, note that a development agreement gives the city and council the opportunity to ask for things in return.
Okay. I got that. Counselor Davis and then Counselor available.
I'm just curious, on that development, I mean, what are the parameters that are in place that makes it so that these changes would possibly make it pencil as opposed, I mean, is it geographic constraints? What are we talking?
The zoning is medium-density 16, which is, it's narrow lots. And when you're working with narrow lots, generally how our code is written, it would limit it to one-car garages. These changes would allow two-car garages. I think that was a big part of it is, you know, marketability of the final product with the code restrictions that currently exist.
Okay, thank you. Counselor.
I would echo what Counselor Hamilton was saying. I'm nervous about the allow the side entry on the narrow lots, especially if there's not a variation of homes within that. I did some driving around after briefing to look at some of the neighborhoods that have that side entry. My knee-jerk reaction is to say it's tacky, but I'll say that it's visually unappealing in a neighborhood to just have it. So having that variation in the neighborhood, so some are side entry, some are just regular front-door entry, would be my preference and way to go. And I don't know if that's through individual development agreement or putting that right here, that you can't do that all, all of them the same.
That certainly is something that could be addressed either through code writ large or through a specific development agreement. And I will note that what you have described was part of Planning Commission's recommendation, was to explore a mix within neighborhoods, as well as if side entry is considered, limiting it to only very narrow lots, looking at like 30 to 35 feet max width.
Curious on that one, too. Let me, I'll do this, and I'll go to you. You know, there are developments where they have a lot of those side entrances, you know. What is the difference between that and, say, the, there's a development in Taverner Ridge that has front entrance and rear garages, that they're sort of like the same sort of footprint of a home? What would be the difference between those two? Is it just a design thing? Because I think that looks actually more attractive, and it seems to make a lot more sense than a side entrance. Is there a difference between those two?
Yeah, so under the current version of the code, what you're describing in Taverner phases 10 and 11, those are RMD-16 lots. And I think that that starts from a layout that incorporates alleys or private roads as they are in Taverner. So you can get that rear access to lots and then have the front door facing the street, although the, for practical purposes, the primary entrance is likely through the back.
Okay. Counselor Wells. Sorry, didn't mean to step on you.
The only comment I have is that proposed development, one of the things, my biggest concern was, I'm not against the narrow houses, the 50-foot lot line, but, and the side-entry door. But I don't think it should be facing, all of those buildings should be facing inside of the development, not outside, where they're visually, I'm going to say, I'm going to use the word distracting, but to other people driving by, if they so wish to move into that development and that type of development fits their forte, that's fine. But to turn around and have to expose everybody else in the community to that. So I'm using Raymond Road, for example, that they wouldn't be facing garage door, garage door, garage door, garage door, Raven Road, have it faced internally, have a road inside where they would look at them that way. That was my biggest concern.
Great. Counselor Burkle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for my own verification. Would this be allowed only on small-lot developments?
So RMD-16?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As proposed, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. I just, just to reiterate the point, I understand that this development in neighborhood in particular has challenges, and we need to address that. But I think, I just want to, I think catering to that development need versus having still the discretion to make sure our town looks unique and we have the ability to create what we want to see. And in that instance, I'm, it sounds like what Counselor Wells was saying would be a development agreement option. So I think keeping that component is very important to me, just to reiterate the point I already made.
Great. Yep.
Unrelated, I, you mentioned Planning Commission and their input. Some of the, when we go over these, some of them include what Planning Commission's recommendation was. But can we, I know it could be time-consuming, but is there a way to incorporate always their feedback, if there was some, so that it brings their voice more into this?
Yeah, if, it is in all of them, in the table. Yeah. It is, it should be noted on...
Oh, did I miss it at the top?
It's on the right, the right call of the table.
Oh, this is all a Planning Commission? Okay, I missed that at the top. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can keep moving. Thank you.
Perfect. We'll hop back up half a step here to row two of that housing table. This one is still a work in progress, but to put the concept out on the table, this would be for single-family, townhouse, duplex, and triplex products and new subdivisions requiring lots over a certain slope to be terraced to create usable yard space. So the goal here is where you do have sloped lots to still maintain usable yard space. The numbers are something I am still working on with our engineering staff and consultants and would have back, certainly before this comes back to council.
Great. We can keep going. I don't see any questions.
All right, moving on to...
Oh, sorry, Counselor Davis, did you have a question? I didn't mean to overlook it.
Oh, it's okay. I was just going to say, I echo the commentary from Planning Commission that I want to make sure it doesn't preclude daylight basements, if that opportunity exists.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the list, and my apologies, as we go forward, I will try to remember to verbalize what Planning Commission's comments, if any, were on these. The next item on the list has to do with accessory dwelling units. State legislature recently, in 2024, passed a bill HB 1337 around expanding housing options by easing barriers to the construction and use of ADUs. So as proposed, the code amendments would be the minimum to meet the provisions of HB 1337, which does things like set maximum impact fees for ADUs at 50% of those for principal unit. It allows up to two ADUs, or at least two, two ADUs in all zones that allow for single-family houses, sets a maximum ADU floor area that cannot be less than 1,000 square feet, and some other provisions as well. So again, how I have drafted the proposed code amendments here is the sort of minimum threshold to meet the requirements of that law around ADUs. Any, any comments or questions on that part?
Oh, Counselor Wells.
Yeah, the only comment I had, which I made in briefing, was in the past, ADUs had to be smaller than what the existing dwelling was.
Right.
But now, for everybody's information, you can build a larger ADU and use the existing building as the accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that, you could flip it that way, to get, as a means, to get two residences on a lot, to build a new primary residence and call the existing one an accessory unit. I believe that would be possible.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, too, and this is, I'm almost embarrassed to ask this, but I keep looking at this item number four. It says maximum ADU floor area cannot be less than 1,000 square feet. So the maximum area can't be less than 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, so we can't create code that says the maximum area is 800 square feet. We can't, our current code says the maximum area is half of the area of the primary structure. That doesn't fly with this, because if your primary structure is 1,200 square feet, the maximum ADU size would be 600.
Right, okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
It's just raising that basement a little bit.
Okay, great. Other questions?
All right. The next item is also related to ADUs, but this is not part of the bill language. And Planning Commission recommended against it, which is changing the ADU review procedure from type two, which requires public notice to a 300-foot radius, to a type-one ministerial decision, which would eliminate that public noticing and public comment period.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. So just to clarify, there's no opportunity of public notice, nothing in type one?
There is not. Currently, there is a requirement on the books that ADUs are required to notify the applicable HOA. So as proposed, that requirement would stay. But you are correct, but under a type-one review process, there is no required public noticing period.
So a neighbor would rely on the HOA to be able to let them know?
Correct.
Got you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I am with Planning Commission. I don't think that we should make that change. I think that they, putting an ADU should be a type-two, not a type-one.
All right, we'll move along. The next item has to do with duplexes and triplexes on existing lots. So duplexes and triplexes are already allowed in all residential zones in Ridgefield, including on existing lots. However, as we've seen some property owners explore an option... However, as we've seen some property owners explore an option of putting a triplex specifically on an infill lot, we've found that some of the numbers and the development standards really prevent this allowed use from really being feasible or implementable, which was not the intent of, of the code that allowed these uses outright. So the proposal is to change or remove those numbers that are proving to be roadblocks to a permitted use being built.
Great. I may have a question.
Do you have a question?
I may. I comprehend what it said, to answer my question. So a duplex or a quadplex only gets counted as a half an ADU. Is that correct?
Not quite. So this is for duplex and triplex, specifically. Currently, both of those get counted as half of a dwelling unit, for the purposes of calculating density, which makes sense for a duplex on an existing lot, two-for-one, basically. But for a triplex on an existing lot, the math doesn't work. You really need three-for-one to make that density math work. So the proposal is to count each triplex unit as one-third of a unit, for the purposes of density, which would make triplexes on existing single-family lots mathematically feasible, where they're already allowed by the law.
So then where I'm coming from, I'm going someplace else, and it's TIFs. A normal, a normal house is charged five thousand dollars in TIF fees, ten ADU, or TIF, TIF amounts, the five hundred and something a month, or per charge. So then what would a duplex or a triplex be charged?
So, current status and the proposal does not change this, is that each duplex and triplex unit pays full TIF as a dwelling unit.
Okay. I just need that clarification. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you. On that note, something tells me that other jurisdictions have had duplex, triplex, quadplex pay a multifamily rate. Is that, does that sound familiar to you, or am I just kind of crafting that myself?
Yeah, definitions around multifamily vary. Ours is four units or greater, so quadplexes would pay multifamily rates.
Okay, but duplexes and triplexes, each, they just, the whole unit pays one impact fee, or there's two or three?
If there's three units, you're getting three impact fees.
Okay, all right. Wow. Okay. That's a different code change that we're going down, so I'm gonna leave that alone. But that's good information. Thank you.
Okay, we can move on.
All right, great, thank you. The next item is close to housekeeping, but not quite, so it's on this list. There's a twenty-five-foot setback required from our major arterials, so Pioneer, Hillhurst, and Royal. Right now, it's unclear in the code where that is measured from. The proposal is to clarify that it's measured between a house and the property line, which is the definition of setback. All right? And there's a figure in the code that we would update to properly show that. All right, the next item is to require signature blocks for Clark County Public Health on final plots and final short plots. This creates an opportunity for public health to confirm that any land divisions the city is about to approve are not segregating a well or septic system from an existing residence. So something that's come up a couple times that we feel needs to be cleaned up. All right, the final housing item has to do with CCNRs for HOAs, and it would allow the community development director to approve minor changes to CCNRs when those changes don't have a significant effect on a city facility or city right, in which case council approval would still be required. That is, current code and current practice is that any changes to CCNRs require council approval. There are changes that don't necessarily have an impact on those city rights. So the goal here would be that, that would be a staff-level approval. And Planning Commission did request clear language, and what I have recommended from the city attorney is, changes in these documents must be approved by the city of Ridgefield through the city council, or by the director, in the event that the director determines that the changes do not have a significant effect on a city facility or a city right under the documents.
Questions on that one? Counselor Hamilton?
Thanks. So just for our clarification, what would be a significant effect?
So, something impacting, for example, a stormwater facility that's owned by the HOA, but where the city has access and maintenance rights, easements, dedications, that type of thing. The example that prompted this was an HOA that wanted to make a change to some language about their insurance. That's not having an impact on the city.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I would, in general, support, like, Planning Commission's recommendation of having clear language. I feel like, it's kind of challenging, because I feel like there's so many different areas that that could go, and that might be a challenge. But I'm also asking myself, how many times over the last year have I seen an HOA change come before the council? And I can't think of one. So it's like, is this a problem that needs to be solved? Like, how frequent does that happen?
So like I mentioned, to directly answer your question, not often at all. But what prompted us, seeing this as a problem to be solved, was the case I mentioned, where they proposed some changes to their insurance, and we worked with the city attorney to take care of that without having to bring it to council, but want to formalize. But in that type of situation, it's appropriate to go through a staff review.
All right. Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Of course.
So, looking at the, the packet, it doesn't look like the Ms. Parker's proposed language is included in the, the ordinance change in the, in the red line, right?
Not yet, it needs to be updated still.
I would like to see it in there, but I, I might, it feels like it maybe could be a little bit more clear there, just because I want to be ultra-specific on something like that. But in general, I support it, and I support Planning Commission's recommendation there. I just would like a lot of extra clarity, just because it'll reduce the fogginess in the moment when there is something that's unexpected. So, it's always a good way to go. Other questions or comments? Okay.
All right, I will work with Ms. Parker to add some clarification to that item. All right, the next section is trail amendments. Just a couple of items in here. And these are items that were brought forth by Mr. Crownheart after the volume three of the engineering standards was adopted, related to parks and trails. He did an audit of our development code and identified a couple sections that needed to be updated to, A, match the language of the new parks and trails standards, and then B, identified a section where we might strengthen the language requiring trails in planned unit developments to provide connectivity, not just within the development for those neighbors, but also to neighboring features like parks, businesses, and other destinations. So, two items proposed under trails. Back to you, Mayor.
Great. Questions on this one? Nope? Okay, we're good.
Perfect. The next section is a bit of a mishmash of landscaping, critical areas, and native plant amendments. The first item really is aimed at closing a loophole. So current code assigns a budding property owner responsibility to maintain trees and/or shrubs located in the right-of-way, so think the planting strip along the curb. By, trees and/or shrubs leaves out a lot of types of landscaping, but technically someone could read that and say, no, I don't have to take care of it. So, the proposal's to update that language to trees and other landscaping.
That's great.
Okay. The next item is in our critical areas ordinance. There's a existing provision that areas that have been used for domestic uses, rather than being left in a natural state, are exempt from critical areas review. But it's a bit unclear on how domestic uses is defined. So the proposal is to add some clarity on what domestic uses are and aren't. What they are is already listed in there, lawns, gardens, outbuildings, things like that. What they aren't is resource uses, agriculture, forest, mining. So, just adding some clarity in there that will make the, the critical areas review process more predictable. Next item is a fun one. Our critical areas ordinance through the fish and wildlife habitat conservation section of that ordinance protects Oregon white oaks, but it does so in sort of a roundabout way. You don't actually see the words Oregon white oak in that section, so our proposal is to add that. So if someone is, you know, doing a Ctrl F of our code, and what does Ridgefield say about Oregon white oaks, they will actually find something.
That was an oddly specific reference right there.
It's come up.
It's come up, okay.
For a very good reason.
And the next one is under the landscaping code. So, the purpose statement in chapter eighteen seventy-seven twenty-five, which is landscaping, includes, quote, promote the use of drought-resistant native species. That's in the purpose section, but there isn't really a development standard that references back to it. As proposed, the language would add a development standard encouraging water conservation and development landscaping. Planning Commission's recommendation was to explicitly require native species as well in that new development standard.
Okay. This one would probably get me in trouble with the garden club, because I know that they're really strong advocates of native, native plants, but to explicitly require it, I, I think that on that one, I'm, I'm still learning those, and I'd like the better understanding of, of what those are. Is there a list of native plants that we include in our code of like, hey, here's what, your suggestions or, you know, requirements is what you should have?
We do have a list of native species in the development code, that projects are encouraged to use.
So what does encourage look like? Is it just like, we think you should do it, and if you do it, you do it, if you don't, we're gonna look the other way, or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not-
Yeah, okay.
I, I mean, I think when we, I don't want them to restrict to only using the native, because there's a lot of beautiful things that can be planted that aren't necessarily native, that we're, I, I mean, I think sometimes we're overdoing the native, frankly, and missing out on a lot of beauty that we could have, that we don't have, because we're, we're so focused now on the native plants. It's my-
Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. So I'm just trying to connect the dots here for the water conservation piece. Is the native plant, because they're used to Washington, we need to water them less, therefore we, we spend less, we conserve more water? Is that the thought process there?
That's the thought process there, that, yeah, native plants are adapted to our, our climate, require less care.
Counselor Burkle.
I'm inclined to go along with Mayor Protem Chipman regarding simply requiring the use of native plants. There's times during the year when they look absolutely terrible.
That's it. Is, is there a middle ground in, in language, there goes, that, between encourage and require, that maybe steps it up a notch, but maybe doesn't require it?
Something we can explore for this one.
Yeah, okay, it'd be good to see that, yeah. And then Counselor Davis.
Just to get clarification, I mean, are we talking about in common areas, or are we talking about in specific residential lots?
Common areas. So this is landscaping associated with, this is like what the developer installs on a project, residential or commercial.
Yeah, okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. I think we can keep going.
No, no. I, I believe in turn around, and not requiring, turn around, and encourage, or whatever that way, which suggests to do it. It only makes sense. To me.
Yes, I agree.
All right, thank you. Last item under this section, and then we're rolling through to the end, don't worry, is the native plant list, which I previously mentioned. We apply this in all developments we review, but technically, as written, it only applies to developments where site plan review is required. Subdivisions don't technically require a site plan, it's a plat, so the proposal is just to clean that up, so it, you know, in the, the letter of the code does apply to all development projects that are required to do landscaping. Okay? All right, I'll give you the next section here as a batch. These are water utility amendments proposed by our public works department. In light of the water conservation strategy adopted earlier this year, the proposal is to add that water conservation strategy to the list of regulations adopted by reference in Title thirteen, which is the public utilities title, and then create code language in Titles thirteen and twenty that makes the provisions of that strategy enforceable under Title twenty as code enforcement. We'll move on to the last section here. Try the little weirdos, I couldn't fit in any other table, miscellaneous amendments. The first one, revised public works department responsibilities regarding composting education and outreach to match the requirements in the RCW.
Okay, pretty standard one, yeah.
Yep. Next one is to allow payment by installment for transportation impact fees, as permitted under the RCWs. I will note, the missing word there is commercial transportation impact fees, so allowing commercial TIF to be paid by installment.
Great, thank you. I, I think that's a good one.
Okay. And finally, Title twenty, code enforcement, allow orders to revoke a permit to be served via email. Right now, the options are mail, in person, posted on site. Orders to revoke a permit are situations where you need to get something to stop now and formally document it at that time. So this would create an option to send that via email. The formal order would need to be an attachment to that email.
Counselor Davis.
Would that be required to have like a read receipt?
Yes. We would need to build something that, or something like that into the implementation as, you know, if you sent it by mail, it would need to be certified mail.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that is the last item on the list. Thank you for going through those with me. Can move into that public hearing.
Sounds good. Okay, before we do that, counsel, I know you've been asking questions along the way, but I do want to give you all one last opportunity to ask any remaining questions of staff on these code amendments, if there are any. If not, we'll just move into the public hearing. Let's do it. Okay, good. Okay.
I did have a comment.
Okay.
I'm gonna go to the agricultural part of it. We wouldn't have half the development in Ridgefield if we pertained to what's been wrote here. In the past, we turned around and used to have twenty-five-foot setbacks on any, any streams in the commercial zone. Now we got fifty feet, okay, not a problem. In some of the critical land areas, we got a hundred-foot setback. We keep shrinking and contracting. You want to know why there isn't any farmers, what there used to be? It's all these rules are packed on top of each other that are adding up. If you go to Paradise Point, I farmed that for thirty-five years. I run cattle on it. And everybody thinks it's so pristine where the park is now. We used it, and it was all part of the farming enterprise. And we just keep tightening down, tightening down as a council, but you need to take in, and we are, and I say we, because I'm a farmer, speaking that way, we're stewards of the land. Yes, we may not- Yes, we may not do everything like you've got to sit down and rules, but yet if we don't take care of the land, we wouldn't have any crops or we wouldn't have place for animals and everything else. So now we're deciding, farmers, we don't want you anymore. So if you're gonna do anything, and even this is agricultural now, that isn't part of the development, nobody has stopped me from doing what I'm doing, but what we've done in the past has brought forward to what you have today. And it wasn't because we degraded the land, we took care of it. And so now you can see where I believe, I like being on the council to bring some of these issues forward because some of the regulations you're putting in are very, I'm gonna say conservative minded, if you want to say that. I mean, we've got to protect the environment. Your environment has been protected. And then everything we put down more, it just, that's why all the farmers are getting out. They can't afford, they can't comply with all the regulations. And this new tax that come on, the BNO tax, that's the reason Vancouver Clinic is paring back everything. They gotta pay tax on their gross revenue. So if they charge you $25,000 for an operation and they get cut back, they turn around, they gotta pay the state BNO tax on the total, total price. It isn't your net, it's on your gross. And so at least I got to put my oar in the water. Thank you for listening to me.
Appreciate your, your comments, Counselor Burke, uh, it's Counselor Wells. Yes.
So is there anything in here that you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So Counselor Wells, is there anything in here that you would suggest that we change?
I don't know at this moment. I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to think, there are probably, yes, there are some of the things that actually across the street where the Discovery Drive is, that parcel there, right next to Discovery Drive is close to a critical lands area. We're still farming. I, I worked it up there last week, but there'll be 100 foot buffer back away from that. Have I degenerated the critical lands area where the houses are on seven wells, there's a pond? You've got to stay 100 feet away from the pond so you don't ruin things. What it's gonna do is grow up in blackberries. It's growing up in blackberries.
Yes.
It's growing up in blackberries.
Right.
So I don't know what the answer is. I'm just trying to expose you to some of the ramifications of all these regulations.
But if there was ever a time to stop us from doing it, it's now before we vote these things in.
Well, let's talk to staff, let's figure out something, but yes, I just put my oar in the water, that's it.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is you're the one that understands what these ramifications do in the future. And so before we actually put something into, into code, we need to know that.
All right. I don't have a recommendation tonight.
Okay.
It'd take three days to decide everything.
But we're not gonna decide anything tonight anyway.
You're gonna ask the city manager on that. Okay.
Yeah, we have, this is only first reading, so we'll come back and, you know, I think it would be good for a council's perspective if we came back with this and you had, you had some things that you felt like kind of matched what you were saying and it would help us guide our action on second reading.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Wells. Okay. If there's no other questions right now, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing no questions, the public hearing is now open. If you've signed up with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called and you will be receiving permission to unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. If you'd not sign up in advance but would like to speak, please use raise hand feature on your toolbar. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to mute or unmute, and the city clerk will grant you permission to speak. When speaking, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes and there will be no back and forth discussion with city council. This public hearing is now open. Ms. Julie, is there anybody signed up on the list to give comment tonight?
I do not have anyone sign up.
Okay. Is there anybody in the room who would like to give comment during this public hearing? Seeing none, is there anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online, Mayor.
Okay. I will give one last chance for anybody online or in the room to speak during public hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing will now be closed. Thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussion on this item? Okay. Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1464, ordinance of the City of Richfield, Washington, mending chapters within titles two, seven, eight, 12, 13, 15, 18, and 20 of the Richfield Municipal Code.
Thank you very much. Okay. And again, this is first reading, this will come back to council at a later time for action. Thank you again, counsel. Thank you, staff, for your, your effort on this. Okay. We're gonna go back into our second public comment period of the evening. Anyone wishing to speak to council regarding all items not specific to a public hearing may come forward at this time. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Written comments will be submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting. So Mr. Garrison, we'll go to you, sir.
Roy Garrison, 1186 South 30th Place. It's no longer the Donut Hole, so it's called G Kirk Plateau. And we have situations there that I think that you as a council, our police department, we need to start controlling these electric bicycles that makes your light flash on that damn machine you got setting out there. They're going faster than I'm driving. They're yelling at the cars as they go by. And as an old man, you know, in my day, if my kids is doing that, I'd whack them with this damn stick. So I, I think that unfortunately, and tell you folks as a council, address this, I know you got a youth council you're putting together and I've read the newspaper, the articles and stuff. You say you're gonna try to address this, get them people involved, well, you better do it pretty soon because I'm concerned that we could have some fatalities if they don't straighten themselves out. And it's gonna, could be real quick because they, I faced them the night when I drove to the council meeting and a good thing with old man. Thank you.
They can outrun ya?
Yeah, they outrun ya.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Thank you for joining us tonight. Always a pleasure to see you and point, all points noted. Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to give a public comment in the room tonight? Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment and we'll move into council and staff reports. Let's see here, where should we start tonight? Does anybody, is anybody hankering to go first? If not, I'll just call on people. All right, we'll start at my far left here, I'm gonna go with Counselor Hamilton, we'll go away rightward. How about that?
Okay. Thank you so much. So just, I'm just, I'm gonna make this brief. I had a couple of great meetings, but I'm excited, I went to the school board meeting and then I was invited by Dr. Rodriguez, who's our, you know, the RSD superintendent to be part of the strategic planning core team. So that'll, those will be three upcoming meetings really focused on the direction for the school district over the, that'll be through the end of the year, the next three meetings. So I'm very excited to be a part of that team. One of, one thing I would note that she is including people, you know, we've all seen people online or people that can have contrasting opinions to the things that we're doing. And some of those people were invited to participate in this and I think that that's a really cool thing that our community does is we don't shy away from conversations that might be opposing, but we learn and we grow from that. So I think that's really cool. I want to give a shout out to Detective King at the Pal Gala. That was a really beautiful tribute to him and the good work that he has done. So thank you to him specifically and our police department in general. I sat in on the Friends with the Refuge meeting and they have bricks available for purchase at the conservatory. If anybody would like to do that, some people mentioned that would be a fun Christmas present, so just throwing things out there. And we did the AWC District Five meeting. I did a great networking event at the Refuge last night, just lots of bebopping around and happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Thanks for bebopping. All right. Counselor Berkle.
Thank you. Just a few things to report. On October the 11th, as you may or may not know, I'm involved with Green Bag and we were able that day to collect 10,777 pounds of food, which as you know, is distributed between the Resource Center and Neighbors Helping Neighbors. We also were fortunate to have received over $1,200 in cash, which we will use to buy more food to go to neighbors and helping neighbors. I attended the retirement party for Neil Kimsey. Some of you may know him and some of you may not. It was very well attended and he made a remark that there was more people from Ridgefield than anywhere else at the event. I thought that was admirable. Certainly the most enjoyable event was the opening of the pump track at Boyce Park. I don't know if you know what that is or where it is, but if you have an opportunity, it's on the north end of 32nd Court. We had, I would suggest, 60 kids with bikes ready to officially get on the pump track as they had already been there unofficially. But it's a tremendous addition to our community. I think we're the only one in Clark County with one. And every kid I talked with was absolutely thrilled to death. So, Mr. Car, thank you. It was perfect.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Wells.
I can ditto a couple of the other comments or three comments that the other ones made, but the Neil Kimsey retirement party was a packed house and like Counsel, Counsel Berkle said, there was a big attendance from Ridgefield there, Ridgefield City Council and the Ridgefield people. The Boyce Park, it looked like bees in a beehive with all the kids on their bikes and there was already a couple of little casualties, no real scars and scrapes yet, but down the road there will be, but the kids really enjoyed it. It's something for them to go do to keep them out of mischief, a sport that they can turn around and enjoy. And then Officer King, his recognition on the work that he's done with youth in the schools was appreciated by all. And they did an excellent, excellent presentation there on a video and that really put Ridgefield on the front page, if we can say that. And then I had my briefing. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Favella, we'll go to you.
Anyway, I attended the Boyce Park opening. I was very late because my daughter had a volleyball game, but it was still great to show up and see all the kids enjoying. I attended an ECHO meeting. They are, we are drafting the updated five-year local homeless housing plan and that housing plan will be presented to county council November 18th. So if anybody is interested in listening in on that session. I had the Leadership Clark County Retreat over the weekend and AWC District meeting. I was not, when I was at the Leadership Clark County Retreat out of town, I was not able to be at the PALS event, but I was FaceTimed in and that was really special. I got to listen to Officer or Detective King's speech and seeing the video of the work that he's done in this school is really, it was really impactful to me. I work with a lot of students who are in foster care or who are going through some really difficult things in their life. And sometimes because of how children are taken out of their home, it's the officers that are removing them and not the social worker. So to have a positive impact where there's an officer in the classroom, coming to them in a time that's good, it's not always bad. It really does bridge that connection back together. And I'm so immensely grateful that we have a chief and a department who sees the value in connection and being in community. So I think Detective King is the perfect person for that, but I also thank our chief for making sure that her officers are allowed to just be who they are and kind of find their natural groove and fill those spots. So thank you so much. And then lastly, I attended the Battleground City Council meeting to recognize Jill Carmy for her new role as the Calhets County Superior Court Judge and recognizing the work that she's done, again, with our department and community out in Battleground. And then Counselor Hamilton and I have a Sunday chat this weekend at Seasons Coffee downtown from 12 to 2. So if anybody would like to come and hang out with us, we would love to see you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a little bit of a busy week. So I had CTRAND board meeting last week. We received a presentation from the Interstate Bridge Project, which gave a lot of great information. Most notable piece was the updated figures for the operations and maintenance that came in at about half of what they originally said. Trimet would be on the hook for even 55% of that. So the fraction that would be in theory paid by, you know, Southwest Washington is about a quarter of the number that's originally thought. However, that doesn't alleviate all the concern, but it was nice to at least get some more tangible numbers, to have some dialogue around. There wasn't really any movement regarding the board composition piece. So that's kind of like a, you know, no movement yet kind of a, kind of a thing, but that is the CTRAND update. I echo the sentiments about the Pal Gala. It was, it was one of the more prideful moments I've had just even being associated with the city to, to be able to watch that. It was just super cool. Boyce Park, it was fantastic. The only note I'll say, it is not just for children. I went down there myself. And I'm here in all, with no broken bones, right? It was awesome. It was awesome. Yeah. And then speaking of parks, we had our first County Parks Task Force, I think is the name of it, looking at, you know, just the future of our county's park systems and how they're funded. And I'm really looking forward to that work and just sort of seeing how that unfolds. And I appreciate the council for trusting me to be our voice on that as well. So that's what I got.
Cool. Thank you, Counselor Davis. Mayor Pro Tem, we'll go to you.
Okay. So I attended the Clark Regional Voice Water, two of their meetings in the last couple of weeks. And one of the big things that's happened there is this press release that they were awarded $4.3 million in funding from the Washington State Public Works Assistance account for, for a key Ridgefield infrastructure project. So this is the Ridgefield Sewer Redirection Project and it's a $16 million project, but it's gonna be completed in 2020. But they were very excited about getting that amount of money to help them with that project. So of course I also went to Mr. Kimsey's retirement party. So that was also very nice. And the Pal Dinner for, for our, I just lost his name, for Ty. Good grief. Anyway, it was, it was, it was a great event. Counselor Favella and I went to a couple of classes at Richfield High School this week and talked about the Youth Commission Program. I don't know if we encourage, we encouraged kids to apply for it, but who knows? But anyway, we'll see how many applications we get. Do we know how many we got?
Part of my report.
Let me see here.
We toured neighbors.
Oh, yes. And then we went and toured neighbors because Counselor Favella had never been to the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Food Bank before and I wanted her to be able to see it. So I took her up there and she got to, she got to see neighbors. So that was great because many, many, many people that live here have never actually been up to that food bank. It's kind of amazing. But anyway, so she got to go up there and see it, which is great. We have had a very large increase in the people that are coming to Neighbors Helping Neighbors Food Bank for food in this last month. Last week, we had 78 carloads. This week, we had 76 carloads. We were like in the 50s, maybe 60s. What's happening in the economy, what's happening with people not getting paid, you know, in their jobs, whatever, all these different things that are happening with the food stamps going away, the US food programs that are being cut back are causing a huge amount of people needing help with food. So the Green Bag Program is a huge part of our assistance with food, along with Clark County Food Bank. Let's see here. I, I won't talk anymore about anything else that I did. Let's see here, I, I won't talk anymore about anything else that I did, I guess, it's just, just whatever, a busy week.
Okay, great.
A busy two weeks.
Thank you for everything you did, okay, I guess that leaves me. Just a few things I wanted to update council and the public on that have been happening. It's been exceptionally busy week and you can tell from the other council reports that everyone's been very busy and that's always good to see. Starting off, I attended the Clark County Transportation Alliance and Clark County Governmental Affairs Roundtable, the city manager and I attended that, it's an event put on by identity Clark County and that was an opportunity for us and as well as the Regional Transportation Council, so it's an opportunity for us to attend. RTC puts together its priority projects as a part of its plan for the coming year. We were there to affirm the projects that we have included as part of RTC's plan. Those two projects are South Royal Road and the improvements that need to happen there, as well as South I-5 Access. Those are included once again, those are also part of our legislative agenda, but those are big things that we, infrastructure things after we get the widening project done, but to include those as well. It was also an opportunity for me to share our preliminary legislative agenda for the coming, for the upcoming short session and really what I highlighted was just a few things that we had been talking about preserving, making sure that funds like MACHDA and the Public Works Trust Fund don't get swept with revenue shortages. It seems like that tries to happen every year as we're facing another additional $8 billion, I think, shortfall in revenue. It'll be important that those are preserved as well as just, just some other initiatives that we've had over, over time. I also attended the Clark Public Utilities Board of Commissioners meeting earlier this week. They had an item on their agenda where they were looking at rate structures and they approved a few new models, which fully support, they have not raised rates in, I think, over 10 years. We are not a primary customer for water when it comes with Clark Public Utilities, but we do utilize their inter ties during peak seasons and that was actually a point of contention that I think the city had, that we were talking about and something that's going to be an ongoing discussion. So the CPU treats the cities of Battleground and Ridgefield as commercial customers. That is actually a higher rate than residential customers do, but all we are doing is supplementing our water supply during peak months and then we are reselling that at a break even cost to our residents. And our case that we're trying to make with that, the Board of Commissioners there is that we really do need to have a municipal partner rate for that water. As it stands, the rate structure that they approved the other day is going to mean that the city of Ridgefield has $50,000 to $100,000 extra that we are paying into water usage rights over the, over the coming years, which I don't think is sustainable for this city and especially as we look towards partnerships on infrastructure. We are considering a water transmission line and a new inter tie here on the west side of town and the city is looking at a contributing half of the investment dollars that go into that, that's upwards of $2 million. And so that is case in point where we are not a commercial customer, we are definitely a municipal partner. And so we are going to continue to have ongoing discussions with CPU on that and hopefully get to a resolution so that we can find something that's equitable for them to preserve their bottom line. I know that they have operating costs they have to preserve and that's one of the things they're looking at doing in their new rate structure, but also for us, that it needs to be beneficial and equitable to our residents and making sure that we don't have to raise rates on them during peak season because lord knows it's already high enough as it is. So that'll be an ongoing discussion. I also attended the PAL Heart Behind the Badge Gala, I won't talk about that other than the fact it was very impactful. AWC Association of Washington Cities had their District Five meeting the other day in La Center. Counselors Hamilton, Mayor Potem, and Counselor Favella, we all attended, it was a good event. It's always good to just connect with other cities and just kind of hear what's happening there. And one thing I'll say about these, these events is we do tend to show up well and, you know, especially as we've been talking about BRCRC with CTRAND and what the board composition looks like and there's been a lot of talk about populations and balance and stuff and, you know, Ridgefield's population, we only really make up, I think, 4% of the county population, but I think our impact is far bigger than that, then it's not just a number. You see us at everything, to have our detective honored at a regional event, to have, you know, our presence at Commissioner Kimsey's retirement, all the things that we're present at and the impact that we're making and how we influence policy regionally, I think is, is a pretty big splash and it's something notable and we should be proud of, so I'm excited about that. Two other quick things for me, I attended a retire Ridgefield event today, that's a group of about, I think, 50 or 60 retirees. We met at the TMI building and I just did a brief update on things that are happening within the city and then private Q and A. That's a great group, I mean, they will, they will, they exceeded their time and I think we went overtime with them asking questions, but it was all really meaningful, intelligent questions that they're asking and it's always a joy to kind of speak to that group, I spoke to them a few months ago, it was a pleasure to do it again. And then the last two things, and I know the city manager's going to talk about it, but, you know, looking forward to reviewing our youth commission applications and interviews, we're going to start conducting interviews next week. The hope is that we're going to do our appointments at our next council meeting, I think, on November 6th. So I'm excited about that, get them underway. And then the very last thing, just a quick plug, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its annual mayor's panel at its Lunch and Learn series on Tuesday, the 28th, so this coming Tuesday from 11 to 1, it's at Beveridge. I will be joined along with the other mayors from Southwest Washington or Clark County to talk about things that are happening here and just do a Q and A there, so looking forward to participating in that as well. That's it for me, I can go on, but we want, we'll go to city manager next.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the community. Most of what I would update you on has been covered by you, thank you very much for your updates. Just a couple of brief follow-ups regarding the youth commission and applications, the application period did end today. While we do not have a final count this evening, as of yesterday morning, we were at 20 or 21. So with nine, we are at 22. So we have 22 applications, there will be a process whereby the blind application process will move forward into a review by all of council to determine which of the applicants will go forward and be interviewed by the mayor and then ultimately come back to you on November 6th. So looking forward to the next phases on it, great work on the outreach and being able to actually get some good applicants in. So that's youth commission. Secondly, couple of events that hadn't been noted coming forward. First of all, Sunbelt Rentals is a new business in town that's going to have next Friday at noon. You're looking at me like I'm crazy. It's next week, is it the 29th? So not next Friday, sorry, the 29th, so next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. So next Wednesday at noon, there will be a grand opening for Sunbelt Rentals, which is out by the junction just south of Chevron and all of, you know, it's near Parlumber. So that'll be at noon and they'll have food and fun and there will be, the chamber will be out there as well. Secondly, the Wine Walk is for Saturday in November, so November 1st and I know that we have several of our members of council will be out there pouring wine at the Main Street event, so hoping for a great turnout there. And then finally, an update on Pioneer Widening, spoke with the Deputy Director of Infrastructure for Public Works this evening. The electrification of the lighting out there on Pioneer is going to be occurring very soon, by Monday. We expect to have two lanes open each way, though maybe not a full roundabout at that date, but by the end of next week, which is the end of October, we are anticipating still being on task with getting that done. You'll see a lot of landscaping occurring over the next week. We saw Royal Road, the northern section of the Royal Road, the infrastructure improvements on bike, pedestrian facilities in that area get done. They were yesterday and today, they potentially needed to have it closed tomorrow, but we found out this evening they will not. So it will be open tomorrow, so work is well underway to see that come to a close. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager, Counselor Wells?
No, it is a question, a comment, what about EIG?
That, that's, it's not a public event, but.
It's not a public, oh, okay.
No, it was something that you were invited to.
Counselor Birkel, question or comment for city manager?
Just a comment, I noticed today we're planting trees along Pioneer.
Yes, sir.
Looking, making great progress, absolutely.
It was something that council was very, was very clear about and, and, you know, wanted to be very diligent about assuring that the, that the tree-lined streets that we have currently on Pioneer as you go west from Royal, that we replicate that going east and that there are trees and low-lined shrubs throughout that corridor as well to enhance our tree canopy in that area.
Wonderful. Okay, you're off the hook, we'll move on, Mr. Thamert.
Tonight, I just want to tell you about a major process improvement we're doing at Public Works. It's involving all departments, but, so I'll start with our utilities department. We are enhancing and improving our asset management software and our mapping for our distribution system for the water department and our collection system and treatment system for our stormwater department. This summer, we were able to collect GPS coordinates for all of our assets out in the roadways and right-of-ways and we collected data on over 10,000 assets. So we now have our map completely up to date, which is the first time in my nearly 10 years that we actually have an accurate map. So that was a big improvement for our team. For our operations, our parks and streets teams, we worked with supervisors and our admin staff this summer to, and a consultant to build a new asset management and work order software. And we completed that about three weeks ago and we began training staff. Last week, we trained our park staff on how to use the software and this week, actually today, we trained our street staff and they'll have about a two-month period till the end of the year to try out the software and find any glitches and that kind of thing and then we will go live with the new software starting the first of the year.
Very cool, okay, any question?
Yeah, no, just a comment, I seen Jesse out there with that little pole with the round rig on top, turned around and doing the GPS on every little deal in the middle of the road.
The valve cans.
Where your water shut offs were and that, all over through the city. You kept him busy all the time, giving him coordinates put together.
Yeah, and those 10,000 assets, he collected most, if not all, of the coordinates for those.
Wow.
Wow, yeah, great, thank you very much for your update.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, we'll go to you, sir.
I do not have anything tonight, but I'll answer any questions if you have any.
I can't believe there's no questions, okay, we'll move on. Okay, Ms. Lust.
Nothing else for me either, thanks, Mayor.
Great, any questions for community development? Okay, thank you very much, and we'll go to Ms. Parker online.
Well, hello and thank you, council, but I don't have anything to report tonight, just happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney? Seeing none, okay, thank you, ma'am, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yep, and then lastly to Chief Doriad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll keep it short and sweet, I really appreciate everybody that was present to recognize Detective King. It was a great honor for him and I'm very proud of him. That link will be available for those who maybe weren't at the event to be able to see that video. PAL has released it on a YouTube link, so we'll make sure we get that out to the public.
Pretty cool, okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, thank you everyone for attending tonight, thank you for your input. With that, this meeting is adjourned.